Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting of October 21st, 2015. And could I please have Pastor Donald Cannon come forward from Trans Ministries Incorporated for the opening prayer?
Sovereign Lord of the universe, we thank you tonight for allowing us to gather here, Lord, in this Oval Room, Lord, to discuss what is at hand, oh Lord. Lord, we ask that you place your blessings upon these unique officials here, oh Lord, so that they can make the decision that is proper for this great city, oh Lord. Bless them individually as well as collectively, oh Lord. Let them agree to disagree, oh God, but as long as it's done in love, oh God, have mercy, bless them. Touch them in a special way right now, oh God, and bless their auxiliaries of this great city also, oh God. We thank you tonight, God. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Chief Breezy, oh, excuse me, I'd like to call to order the October 21st, 2015 City Council meeting. And Chief Breezy, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, we have Replacing Director Maloney of Human Resources, Finance Director Williams. And would you please go to roll call, please, for us?
Faria, Lewis, Silveira, Stone Grove, Falta.
Here. And just to let you know, Mr. Faria is not here tonight for a very, very good reason. I don't know how many pounds the grand- is a granddaughter?
Yeah.
His granddaughter? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Great. Yes, granddaughter, his youngest daughter had a healthy baby girl, and he is there being a grandparent tonight, so we have a quorum. Let's go on to item four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion, please? Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second? Mrs. Lewis?
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Silveira, second by Lewis to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carry. Let's go on to item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. And is there anyone who would like to speak at the public forum this evening?
Ken Eaton, Los Banes. Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm again here tonight to announce again that on October 31st, many kids love October 31st, we are having, there is going to be a Harvest Fund Festival from 5:30 to 8:00 PM at 821 West L Street here in town. It's gonna be a fun night. We're gonna have, gonna see the lights showing where it is, shining into the sky. We're gonna have raffle prizes, bicycles, and gift cards, and many more things. We're also gonna have bounce houses, carnival games. We're also gonna have a food court. We're gonna have a fire truck. All of the kids like the fire truck. And we're gonna also have cakewalk, and probably the most important thing, candy. So I welcome and invite all of the city to come and attend. That again will be October 31st. That will be from 5:30 to 8:00 PM at 821 West L Street. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Nice event. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
For the record, Greg Hostetler. I'm here to talk about the cleanliness of our town, and that's kind of one of my hobbies the last few years. As you may have noticed, we've spent quite a bit of time and money on the south entrance of town coming in on Mercy Springs, and we spent quite a bit of money on the south end, cleaning it up, and we purchased the old World's Fair building some time back, and we've cleaned it up, moved the trespassers out, cleaned up all the trash, and the rats, and painted the facility, and we think we may have something good coming out of that, which will benefit the city in the way of jobs and large sales tax. We are now embarking on trying to clean up the west side of town. And as you know, you come in from the city limits, it's somewhat messy to the right, and it continues to get messy until you get toward road. So we're gonna make our effort with land that we have in contract now to try to clean that up, dilapidated buildings and trash, and try to beautify our city, because it's the right thing. And as you may know, we like the landscape. We actually initiated and put together the first lighting landscape district in Los Banes, along with a city engineer at the time. Since then, there have been a number of those annex to that lighting landscape district, and there have been a number of others created. So which you have about two-thirds of the town now, roughly, that is involved or paying lighting and landscape district. And what I'd like to maybe see is have the mayor put together what's called CAC, a Citizen Advisory Committee, and maybe we take a look at what the feasibility is to have the entire town in a lighting and landscape district so they can beautify the whole town. I know that where I live, we don't pay. We, I wouldn't say we get a free ride, but we're not in a lighting and landscape district. And the other two-thirds of the town is paying the bill for lighting and landscape district where they live. See, a lot of things transformed since 1984, from the time I got in the home building business. You know, building permit fees at that time were around $1,200 a house. And today, in our community, those fees are in excess of $30,000, including school fees, which as you also may know, that our company was the first one to sign on to a double state fee for schools. We pay twice the fee for schools, and we pay the highest fee in Merced County to the city for building fees. So we support fees spent for the appropriate things and well-spent, and so far, those appear to be going in the right direction. We want to deal with the homeless, and we want to deal with the graffiti problem. And I'll fast-forward from that to the last council meeting, and a lot of good came out of that meeting, a lot of good suggestions. And since then, we've met with the LAFCO director, and I'm gonna support a lot of what Mr. Jeff Roberts is gonna say tonight, because it's better for the community. And I know that the council has some good suggestions, and specifically Deborah Lewis about a general plan amendment. I fully agree with that. I support that. I'd like to see that done. And I think that's what LAFCO wants to see done. And I think we're gonna talk to the Cardoza's and see if that can get done, because we think it's better planning. So we think through your help as a council, and Jeff will take over from here, and I'll let him give you more detail on how we want to handle that, because we want to see Presidential East built and planned and developed property for the benefit of this community, because I live just a block away. So, not self-serving, but thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, bring you back to council level, and let's go on to consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. And tonight, we have, my name is Director Williams.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Check register for number 155867 through 156082, in the amount of $1,297,418.90. First quarter investment report for fiscal year 2015-2016. Minutes for the August 19th, 2015 City Council meeting. Minutes for the September 2nd, 2015 City Council meeting, and City Council Resolution Number 5706, increasing the appropriation amount in the Homeland Security Fund for revenue and expenditures in the amount of $31,000 for the purpose of an above-ground fuel storage and dispensing station. And all items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay. Is there any City Council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Not seeing anyone. Do I have a motion? Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Do I have a second? Mrs. Stone Grove?
Second.
Motion by Silveira, second by Stone Grove, to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carry. Let's go on to item seven, public hearing. If you challenge to propose action as described herein in court, you may be limited only to raising those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to a public hearing. Item 7A, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of the annexation number 2014-01, pre-zone 204, 2014-02, pre-annexation development agreement, associated mitigated negative declaration, SCH number 2015061056, for Presidential East Estates Area Plan and annexation approximately 106 acres, and unincorporated land lying north of Pioneer Road, west of Mercy Springs Road, SR 165, and east of 11th Street, APNs 026-290-001, 002, 003, 004, 005, 083, -120-012, 013, 014, 015, 016, 017, 018, 019, 020, 021. Is there a short version of this? 021, 022, 023, 024, and 028, continued from October 7th, 2015 City Council meeting. 7A1, City Council Resolution Number 5704, approving mitigated negative declaration, SCH number 2015061056, associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program for Presidential Estates East Area Plan, and annexation number 2014-01 and pre-zone 2014-02. Okay. Ordinance number 1139, amending zoning map to pre-zone approximately 106 acres, and located north of Pioneer Road and west of Mercy Springs Road, SR 165, Merced County, California, from Neighborhood Commercial CN, Plan Development PD, and unclassified U to be annexed into the city of Los Banes. And let's see. Is that it for that one?
That's it.
Okay, good. Let's go on to ordinance number 1140. A pre-annexation development, yeah, that's right, a pre-annexation development agreement with Stonefield Communities Incorporated, commonly known as Presidential Estates East Area Plan and Annexation. And if you look on your agenda, you're gonna see there's some things crossed out, so I'm reading between the cross-out, and it has to be done this way, because from the change from last time. Ordinance number 1141, a pre-annexation development agreement for the Manuel M. Cardoza property, for the project commonly known as Presidential Estates East Area Plan and Annexation. City Council Resolution Number 5705, requesting the annexation and pre-zone of approximately 106 acres for the Presidential Estates East Area Plan and Annexation. Property located north of Pioneer Road and west of Mercy Springs Road, SR 165, Merced County, California. Okay. Yes. We have a change?
No.
Okay. Oh, yes. We're gonna go to the city attorney, because he has to recuse himself.
Yes, Mayor, I own property within 500 feet of the boundaries of this project, and so I need to remove myself from the room while you're doing your business here.
Okay. And who are we going to for the staff report? Okay. Steve?
I believe we have a request from the applicant, Mayor.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jeff Roberts. I work for Granville Homes, and we are in a partnership called Stonefield Communities with Mr. Hostetler, who you heard from just a few minutes ago. Business address is 1396 West Hernan in the city of Fresno, and appreciate the time here at the front end of this discussion. We do have a request, and we're going to request to continue this particular item to December 3rd, 2015. Your hearing, that I believe, is scheduled on that evening. And I want to explain why. You will recall several weeks ago, when we were having the public hearing, it started late, it ended very, very late. I think it was close to midnight when we were talking about the details of the project. And yet, there were some good ideas that were coming out of the discussion at that time. Some of those ideas were relative to the Cardoza property, and the land uses, and proposed densities that were on that particular project. Some of them related to the design elements of our particular property. And some of those issues had to do with LAFCO. And so what we would like to do is to request a continuance. We're gonna use our best efforts to try and pull some of these items together and come back to you with what we think is a more complete package for you to consider. That's gonna take a little bit of time. We are gonna continue working with staff, obviously, to do that. I spoke with Stacy two hours ago about this particular item, and we're making our best efforts to try and get some things done. But because of those items that were presented at the council that evening, and due to that late hour, we couldn't react or really get the work done, we do need a little bit more time. So we'd appreciate your consideration for continuance of several weeks to December 3rd, 2015. And I can answer any questions that you may have about...
Okay. And you said December 2nd, is that correct?
I'm sorry, December 2nd or 3rd.
It's the 2nd.
Your first hearing in December.
It'd be December 2nd.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure. Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Roberts at this time? No questions?
I got one.
Quick question?
Yeah, Mr. Roberts, thank you for you guys, you know, I'm glad that you guys are heeding some of the advice of some of the other council members and trying to bring a complete project forward. I felt like, you know, the last council meeting, I wish that some of these questions would have been asked earlier, seeing how we've known about this project for, I'm gonna say, close to a year now, so that way, we wouldn't have had to get all the way to a public hearing to finally ask and get these questions answered. I just, something that I pride myself on is, is any decision that I make up here as a council person, is first and foremost in my mind is, I want to get it right, but I also want to keep the very, very slow wheels of government from turning any slower. And so I appreciate you guys wanting to work this, because I think at the end of this, this is something that Los Banes needs. There's a definite need for it. So I'm glad that you guys are wanting to get, taking a leadership role and wanting to get full council support, if you can, on a project that we all can agree on and move forward with. So thank you to you and your group for what you guys are doing.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Roberts, you know, sometimes we have projects before us, regardless of how long they may have been in a community or coming to the city to come to the council, that need fine-tuning once it gets here. You know, we have a situation here where all of us have different ideas about the project, and we do want to make it cohesive and make it work for our community, as well as for the developer and the private developers that will be possibly building houses on this, in this project. So with that, I think our staff did as best job as they could with the information they had. But once it comes back to the legislative body, we may have different ideas and questions about what may have happened six, seven years ago versus what's happening now. So I appreciate you and your staff taking the time out to try to rectify and make it possible for us to make an easier decision for your project coming forward. And I think it's gonna be a great thing for the community to have this custom-developed residential area, and I'm sure there are people looking forward to that. I've talked to several people in the community, and they absolutely love the idea of having custom homes, but having it a full custom home project. Thank you again.
We really appreciate the kind comments. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Look at it this way. We go through presidential administrations without making some decisions, so yours is moving pretty fast.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else to speak on item number 7A1, 2, 3, 4, 5? Not seeing or hearing anyone. I will now close this portion of it, and it'll be a contin- I want to, we're gonna continue the public hearing, is that correct? Yes. And we'll continue that till part of the motion, when someone makes that, if they would add in the body of the motion, that we're gonna continue the public hearing to December 2nd. And I think just to be safe, why don't we have one person go through the resolutions, another person second, and then we'll vote on each individual one, just to be safe. Is that okay with everybody? Okay. All right. So do I have a motion to continue and then state the numbers of the resolutions and the ordinance, and then also include the public hearing to be continued on, till December 2nd, on these items? Mrs. Silveira?
So if I'm, I may have to make sure I'm understanding you correctly. I'm gonna make it all in the form of one motion, individual item?
No, each resolution, we're gonna do separately.
Okay. So first thing then is, is I would like to make a motion to continue this public hearing to December the 2nd. Okay?
Good.
And...
All right, let's vote on.
And, okay, and then I'm gonna go one step further is to say as read by title a little while ago.
Okay. All right. All right. Mrs. Lewis?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion by Silveira, second by Lewis, to continue the items as read by title in, read by the mayor, to December 2nd, to continue the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposition? None. Carry. Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to continue City Council Resolution Number 5704 as read by title to December the 2nd.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Silveira, second by Lewis, to continue City Council Resolution Number 5704 to December 2nd. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposition? None. Carry. Mrs. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to continue ordinance number 1139 as read by title to December the 2nd.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay. Motion to continue to December 2nd, ordinance number 1139. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposition? None. Carry.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to continue ordinance number 1140 as read by title to December the 2nd.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay. Motion to continue ordinance number 1130, motion by Silveira, second by Lewis. All in favor?
1140.
1140. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposition? None. Carry.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to continue ordinance number 1141 as read by title to December the 2nd.
Second. I'm sorry. Okay, second. Okay. Motion by Silveira, second by Lewis, to continue ordinance number 1141. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposition? None. Carry. Number 5.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to continue City Council Resolution Number 5705 as read by title to December the 2nd.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Silveira- Okay, motion by Solera, second by Lewis, to continue City Council Resolution Number 5705 to December 2nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay, we are done with that one, and let's go on. Let's call the city attorney back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go on to item 7B. Public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of adopting a proposed ordinance for regulation of a farmer's market located in Title IX, Chapter 3 of the Los Banos Municipal Code. Item B1, 7B1. Ordinance Number 1135, adding Article 42, Chapter 3 to Title IX of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to a certified farmer's market. And let's go on to item 22, City Council Resolution Number 5699, establishing permit fees for, and for the administration issuance of certified farmer's market. And we will go to city manager?
Bill.
Oh, Bill Bonn. Okay. Hang on. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I know you'll be disappointed tonight, but I did not bring my PowerPoint machine, so we won't have to look at that tonight. This is a second reading and consideration of adoption of Ordinance Number 1135, which will add to our municipal code a, excuse me, a certified farmer's market ordinance, and a resolution establishing the permits fees for the certified farmer's market ordinance. This matter was at length discussed at our last public hearing, at which time you introduced it. Tonight, we're asking for you to open the public hearing, receive public testimony, if there is any, consider the testimony, and close the public hearing. And then staff is recommending that you adopt the ordinance as you changed it at your last meeting. There was one change that was made prior to the introduction at the last meeting, and that was regarding the number of days allowed for a farmer's market. And the change is made to allow for not more than two consecutive days for a certified farmer's market. That change was made. I can bring that exact change to your attention if you would like. It's in the ordinance. Let me find it. I believe it's 9-3.4207D. I believe the motion of Mr. Solera, we limited it to no more than two consecutive days per week. So that's the only change that was made from the last meeting, and this is as you introduced it. Just a little background, currently, the city does not have a farmer's market ordinance. The city does not have a formal way of regulating certified farmer's markets. The city has been working on this ordinance for a number of months. It's gone through the planning commission at least three times, and it's been to you this last time. Sets up a process within which anyone wanting to engage in a certified farmer's market, whether on public or private property, will have to first go through a permitting process that will be through the Economic, Community and Economic Development Department. They can receive a permit directly from the director of that department. There are some criteria for issuing that permit, and criteria if the farmer's market is going to occur on public property. And all of that was discussed at your last public hearing. Some of the highlights of that, anyone engaging in a farmer's market will have to provide, if they're on public property, they'll have to provide proof of insurance, naming the city as an additional insured, have to sign, hold harmless and indemnity agreement in favor of the city, which is required by our risk management authority. And also, we have some operational criteria that will be managed through the Director of Economic and Community Development to make sure that the farmer's market can coexist with the area surrounding it in terms of noise, traffic, those types of things. So we've set up the criteria for that, and I believe we've given staff in reviewing the permit enough discretion to deal with those criteria and add any other conditions that might be necessary for a particular location being looked at for certified farmer's market. We have, I'm not going to go through the history of the farmer's markets that we've had in Los Banos. We have one small operator at this point, and he's attempting to go through the process now. We have set up an interim permitting process for him to allow him to continue to operate, but he'll be required to go through the formal process once this is adopted and becomes effective, which would be 30 days from today's date. So unless you have any questions specific to the ordinance that you want me to answer or I could do. The other thing is, is the resolution sets forth the cost of the permit, which is only the processing cost of the permit, and it's established at $150. There could be departmental service charges should the farmer's market require other city services, depending on its location, and anything specific to that particular farmer's market. So I hope that's enough information for you to move forward tonight. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for the attorney?
I don't have any discussion. I was ready to, I was ready to make a motion.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Stonegrove?
I was going to make a motion.
Okay. Hang on just one minute, and I'll call you. You were first, and you're second. Mr. Kerrigan, have you reached an agreement with Mr. Reyes on this proposal?
I believe so. He's in the process of getting all his information together. He's working with staff, and we're hoping to issue a permit Friday before 5:00, so he can be out at the park this weekend. Am I correct?
Okay. Now, I just, I'm going to be in favor of this, because I understand that you've reached an agreement with our city manager, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Come on up to the microphone. And state it for... Go ahead, say your name.
My name is Will Reyes. I live on the Willie Bees Farmer's Market, Pacheco Park, 905 East Pacheco.
Okay.
Saturday and Sunday. This last week, I wasn't there due to insurance.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So I've since acquired the insurance, and currently, we're working on a permit with the Merced County Environmental Department for the Environmental Health Department. And it's actually taken the last three days, but we are waiting for them to get back to us tomorrow. So as soon as they get back to us tomorrow, then we'll know about the permit.
Okay. And for the record, you've reached an agreement with, because this ordinance, I want to be perfectly clear, that this ordinance gives the city manager the power to set conditions. And it's my understanding that those conditions have been set, and you've agreed to those conditions, and so everything is okay going forward. Am I correct?
The conditions I'm aware about are on the interim permit.
Yes.
Those are what I'm aware of. So if that's all that there is, if there's not any more, yeah.
Okay, are those the same conditions, Kerrigan?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Welcome.
All right. Okay. So, you know, at the last meeting, it was stated that, you know, no one wants to put him out of business. I don't think that's the intent, but the conditions that are going to be set forth, this ordinance gives the city manager the authority to set the conditions, and those conditions have to be met by the applicant. So in essence, we're giving the city manager the authority to either keep him in business or not get, keep him in business. So with that, with that understanding, we can go forward with the vote. Mr. Solera?
Mr. Mayor, if there is no other discussion, I would like to make a motion to waive the second reading of Ordinance Number 1135, adopting Article 42, Chapter 3 to Title IX of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to certified farmer's markets.
Okay. Mrs. Stonegrove?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Solera, second by Stonegrove, to approve Ordinance Number 1135 as read by title. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. To waive the second reading of Ordinance Number 1135. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Mr. Solera?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1135 as read by title.
Okay. Mrs. Stonegrove?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Solera, second by Stonegrove, for the adoption of Ordinance Number 1135. And Finance Director Lewis, Williams?
Maria?
Lewis?
Yes.
Solera?
Yes.
Stonegrove?
Yes.
Falata?
Yes. Okay, let's go on to item number two. Mr. Solera?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 5699, establishing permit fees for the administration and issuance of certified farmer's market.
Mrs. Stonegrove?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Solera, second by Stonegrove, to approve City Council Resolution Number 5699. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay. Let's go on to item eight, presentation regarding implementation of United Way of Merced County's 211 Telephone Service in Merced County. Okay, and we have to, oh, okay, let's go with this, because I know I have to click something else that's going to be a presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the councils. My pleasure tonight to present to you Octavio Valencia and Carol Bowman with United Way of Merced County. Carol is the CEO of the group. They're here to provide you with some information regarding a system, a telephone system that's going to start in Merced, Mariposa County tomorrow, October 22nd. It's called 211. It's the 911 version of social services assistance as 911 is to public safety or law enforcement or emergency services. So they have a brief presentation and a video that they would like to show for you tonight. It's a great presentation. It's a great service for our community. We're glad to present it. The fire chief and I saw them in Merced and had to bring them in. They might be, we might be the first presenters in Merced County that they're doing this for tonight, so we're really excited. And without further ado, I will turn it over to Carol and Octavio.
Okay, Carol, do you want to speak, and Octavio wants to speak first, and then we'll run the video, or how do you want to do this?
I'll speak first and say a few words, and then we'll run the video.
All right.
As part of the presentation.
No problem.
So, good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here, and thank you for that very nice introduction. And yes, 211 will be live tomorrow. We are launching 211 from Merced and Mariposa Counties tomorrow. We're really excited about this. It's something that United Way has wanted to implement for many years, and because it provides a really good service to the community. 211 is a phone number primarily. Anybody can dial it from within Merced County and reach a call center, where there are professional referral operators ready to assist people with finding services they may need. It's also a database, and database is accessible by anyone to look for services on their own without having to call or dial or call 211. Guess we don't dial anymore, do we? So just follow along here a little bit, I think. Click somewhere. No? Over here? Oh, I'm sorry. So we already said it's a free, accessible, three-digit phone number. And some of the services that are included in the database are any human services, child welfare, elderly care, mental health, support groups, shelter and housing, housing for the homeless, food pantries, whole wide range of categories of programs that are available or accessible for anybody within the county. We have a number of programs for Los Banos, also inventoried in the database at this time. We probably don't have everything. We're starting, we're launching tomorrow with about 850 programs in the database, and our expectation is over the next four or five months, that will increase by another 850. So we know we don't have every program that there is. We'll be, continue to reach out to community members and to nonprofit organizations to enlist or to input their program information into the database. We want it to be as complete a resource as possible. So our mission is to connect people to services and programs that will improve their quality of life, and, I can't read the rest of it, but basically, to connect them to the services they may need. And this is where I, this is a great video, and I can talk about 211, you know, for another few minutes or so, but I think that the video really will depict for you the value in such a service. It's a five-minute video. Please don't fall asleep. I think that you'll get a lot out of it. Could we start the video?
Thank you for calling 211. How can I help you?
I was told to call you by if you have any resources for rental assistance.
211, largely funded by the United Way...
I'm calling 211.
...provides access to confidential information and referral service that connects you with a broad range of community, government, and faith-based services in your local area.
My daughter's been very ill since September off and on, and I have, like, hundreds of thousands of dollars in doctor bills. We're going to get eviction tomorrow. I just don't know.
I'm going to see if I can find some resources in your area.
The trained professionals at 211 provide referrals to services such as rent and utility assistance, shelter and housing connections for the homeless, nutritional assistance and basic food benefits, and transportation coordination and assistance.
I was told to call you folks. Going to have some problems making an electric payment and everything.
You're a 50-year-old man, and you have to call your dad to pay the electric bill.
There are so many families that were stable, that were happy, that could, you know, focus on their dreams, and now they're focused on, how am I going to feed my family for the next week? How am I going to pay the bill? You know, how am I going to avoid disconnection of a service?
211 is available in most communities by phone, and in some cases, over email, text, chat, and online databases.
I was calling to inquire about...
I work for the Alpha Plasma Center. They laid off 1,500 people.
I walked into the house, and she was sitting in the kitchen in the dark, and I was like, Mom, what's wrong? And like, she was crying, because she just didn't know what she was going to do for food for the next couple of weeks.
Okay, the only agencies that I'm showing of having any funding are Neighborhood House and Human Solutions.
211 is also available to provide immediate information and direction to resources in times of disaster, including hurricanes and wildfires, and emergency needs such as flu shots and employer layoffs. The United Way and 211 both provide post-disaster support and follow-up.
I am looking for help as my son, I am a recent widow.
I came home from work one day, and my son looks at me and says, Dad's in the back of that ambulance. They said within him being there not even two hours, that he was septic and that he was going to die.
He was sick on a Friday and died Easter night.
Oh, I'm so sorry to hear that. So it's going to be a little rough the next couple of days. I'm going to be staying at the shelter I don't know the name of.
People ask me where I lived at school, but I just said I lived in the same place or by that place, so like, they wouldn't like, make fun, because my school is very like judgmental, they won't make fun of you if you live somewhere that isn't regular or normal.
I can do a housing connection search for things that might be near you. It's a huge education moment for us to really be a mirror for what's happening in the community. So that does put us in a very unique and, I think, somewhat powerful position to just say, this is what's happening. We can help you problem solve and come up with some solutions, but more, our role is illuminating what the issues are. And that's, I think, a unique spot that's not Democratic or Republican, is saying, hey, here's what's happening to your neighbors. We want to help you come up with some solutions so that it doesn't have to be this way.
Thank you for calling 211. How can I help you today?
Our water has been turned off for three days.
The power was shut off. The gas has been shut off now, too.
I'm not used to being able to provide basic things, like...
I'm not used to being able to provide basic things like water.
So one agency that you could contact in your area is called Community Action.
We're going to get electricity turned back on today, and your gas today. It's all going to be today. So I will be right back in just a second, okay?
I'm stumped, found it.
Oh, no, really? You hit it like twice? Let me do it.
Oh my God.
See this?
211 has been helping us out dramatically without all that, I don't know what we would have done, I really don't. Probably on the streets, not be able to eat or anything, I mean, so I am thankful for that.
What the callers tell me is it is such a relief to be able to tell their story to someone who's not going to be judgmental. When I'm talking with people, that is the gift I can give them, is that I'm listening to them, I can be compassionate. Sometimes I'm thrilled when I know I'm sending them to an organization that is specifically going to help that person, and I'm pretty happy when that happens.
There are not enough resources in our communities to meet all the needs. Leaders in 211 and the United Way invite you to help fund, support, and join the 211 movement in your community. 211, excellent everywhere, always. The United Way, give, advocate, volunteer, live united.
You've got a pretty good understanding of at least some of the capabilities of 211. I just also want to say that 211 is not new, it was established as a phone number for referral services in 2000. And throughout California, 92% of residents already have access to a 211 system. In the valley, Merced and Mariposa Counties, we're obviously lacking in this service, and so we're calling out 211, Mountain Valley 211, because we have Mariposa database, we've established a database for Mariposa as well as for Merced. And if we could, oh. So, there's also the database, I know you can't see this very well, but the database will allow anybody by accessing Mountain Valley 211 to search on their own for any service that they may want. And we're not, in the database right now, focus is primarily on vital services that people may need, but we will be expanding it to include things like seasonal information for flu shots, in fact, that's in there right now, or how to sign your children up for softball or soccer or sports activities in the spring and in the summer. There's also, there's also a section for volunteers, and what I envision is that any agency in the county that has a need for volunteer services could put what their volunteer opportunity is, and a person could search in that area of the database to match up what they would like to volunteer for with what the volunteer opportunities may be. So there's a lot of capability of the system that will continue to expand so that it's really, really robust and a vital service to the community in the future. Another component of 211 is that it will have a role in natural disaster relief efforts. And so, rather than all calls going to 911 when there's an emergency, some calls will be redirected to 211, where 211 operators will be able to provide information to callers during natural disaster situations, in terms of evacuation, if evacuation is needed, and what the evacuation routes may be, where to go for, you know, assistance during a natural disaster. So that's another capability that will, it's not available tomorrow, but it will be in the very near future. In a nutshell, that is 211. I want to say that while it's a program, United Way, the funding to do this has been provided through Merced County Human Services Agency, Merced County Public Health, Mariposa, Healthy Families, and so it's a joint effort, it's truly a collaboration and a partnership to bring this service to Merced County.
May I ask, I saw mental health up there, and so if someone calls needing assistance, counseling, or whatever, would this, would 211 still be an appropriate number to contact?
By all means.
Okay.
So, in a dire situation, when someone is calling and asking for assistance.
For help.
For help, then the 211 operator can stay on the line and direct that person until they get to the right resources that they may need. If there's a suicide situation or something.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, suicide prevention, or just kind of, you know, mental health, wellness, you know, something that there wouldn't be a 911 situation to someone who's just looking for counseling.
Yeah, somebody who maybe, I had a call from the United Way office, and somebody, you know, was desperate because they didn't have their medications, and they were depressed, and they're concerned about their own safety, and so, you know, I was able to direct this person to the appropriate resource. I couldn't stay on the line, but I did call her back later to verify that she had reached, you know, the correct resource. So that sort of capability. The 211 call center, the people in the call center, will be doing callbacks to make sure that the referrals that they needed were actually the correct referrals, and they got the information that they needed.
Can we put this on Channel 96, at least the website and forth? Okay, great. Okay, we'll put it on our access channel, too.
Okay.
All right, so any information that you want, if you'd communicate that to the city clerk, and then she'll give it to the city manager for review to put on Channel 96.
Okay.
We can also make this cards, these are promotional cards, to make the service known. To make the service known, so we could hand these out to your police force or fire department, and they may choose to carry them around, just hand them out as a way of handing a resource to people that need a resource. We could also make them available for your lobbies, and just, we've got thousands of them. That would be helping us distribute them, yes.
Thank you.
Sure, I'll give you a whole bunch, I have a bunch.
Thank you.
And we do have, you'll be hearing more about it, it'll be on the radio and in the newspaper, so now that it's launching tomorrow, we'll be doing quite a bit of promotion so that people are aware that this is, service is now available to them.
Because I'm thinking, our police force, they already have handouts to try and get assistance for individuals, and also our fire department on the numerous calls, and maybe for medical assistance, whatever, they could carry a stack of these cards.
Right.
Just for follow-up after, you know, the initial call.
Yep, that's a good idea.
Yes, thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, wait, 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 I see a light lit. Mrs. Stonegrove, the other?
I just wanted to thank both of you for being here tonight for the presentation. I think this is a much-needed resource in our community, just the resources in general, and then the connectedness of the program, I think we're going to be able to help a lot of people, so I appreciate it. One question, what are the hours of operation, is it 24?
Yes, 24/7.
Wow, thank you, thank you very much.
All right, thank you again.
Carol, thank you for the service, thank you, thank you so much. As Mrs. Stonegrove, just let me repeat, it's greatly needed. And now we have 911, emergency calls, before you hit a phone line, I mean, a gas line, you call 811, now we've got 211. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, right. All right, let's go on to number nine, advisement of public notices, and who's going to do that tonight? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. A public hearing will be held on Wednesday, October 28, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers by the Los Banos Planning Commission to consider a conditional use permit and site plan review for a 496-square-foot prefabricated small collection recycling facility. The requested conditional use permit and site plan review is for Replanet Recycling Center for CRV glass, plastic, and aluminum beverage containers located in the Westside Target parking lot at 1405 West Pacheco Boulevard.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Let's go on to item 10, Notice and Announcement of Vacancies on the Following Commissions. A Parks and Recreation Commission, two vacancies, Planning Commission, three vacancies, Tree Commission, three vacancies, Economic Development Advisory Commission, one vacancy, Airport Advisory Commission, three vacancies, Measure P Committee, two vacancies. Okay, and let's see, recommendation, information only, no action to be taken. All right, so let's go on to item 11, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, I just have one item, and I had the privilege yesterday to attend Wayne Percol's funeral service at St. Joseph's, and it was a very special day. I want to thank Chief Marison, Assistant Chief Mason Hurley, all the guys, everybody did an outstanding job, and it was very well done. And as Mike and I were leaving the church service, and we're talking an absolute perfect day, weather, I mean, it was, the ceremony, everything about it was just perfect, and he leaned over and he said, everyone should go out this way. And he's right, it was overflow crowd, Mason did a great job with the eulogy, he had people laughing, he had them crying, but he spoke right to, from his heart to the family, and I couldn't have been more proud of him. And Tim, thank you, I told you already a couple of times, but thank you, thank you, thank you, you guys did an outstanding job, I was very impressed. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to item 12, City Council Member Reports, tonight we'll start with Mrs. Stonegrove.
Thank you. I also want to extend my condolences to the family of Wayne Percolow, a man who dedicated many, many years of his life to service to the city. Every experience that I had with him was a positive one, he was a man with a wonderful sense of humor and a huge heart, and he will be truly missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past Friday, on the 16th, I had the opportunity to attend the domestic violence gathering at our police annex. It's always good to be able to attend that, and some women have some extraordinary testimonies as to how they escaped their lives, with their lives, from a domestic violence situation. It's really an ugly crime, and women, and sometimes men, are forced to feel like they have to tolerate behavior such as that. So, I really applaud the group here in Los Banos that helped people who are involved in domestic violence situations to save their lives and to save their children's lives. So, thank you to those women for reaching out to our community and helping us with those problems. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr., let's see, Deborah Lewis, Scott Solera.
Yeah, I too attended Wayne's funeral, and it was, it was a pretty, it's a tough time, it's a tough time for everybody, the fire services of Brotherhood, there was numerous fire members, firemen there, fire family there, there was EMS people there, police officers were there. I've been to, I've been to a funeral service for a fireman, and on top of that, to have the military service as well. If you can, it's hard to say that it was, for a funeral was such an amazing event, I mean, it was top-notch all the way. And I know, in speaking with Chief Al Logan Sales from the Cal Fire side of stuff, Chief Marison had his hands quite full, just losing a brother, and then having to plan the services along with it, and I will tell you, as a person who's been to one of these before, unfortunately, talking to some folks that were friends of Wayne's, friends of the Percolow family that had never seen a service like this, they were just absolutely just floored with it. It was, it was a pretty neat experience, if you can say that about attending a funeral, I mean, it was, it was top-notch all the way. And my condolences to the Percolow family. My experiences with Wayne is that I never seen the guy upset, and joking, always, always had a joke, the nicknames, everybody had a nickname, truly he will be missed, and it was just such a shock, and you know, you find out one day, our last council meeting, you know, he went to the hospital, and it was, bam, it went that fast, so they say the good ones die young, so I know he's probably making a joke, laughing at us right now up there in heaven, so my condolences to them. Also, congratulations to Mr. Freya and his family on the new addition to their family. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, a lot's been said about Wayne Percolow, Wayne and I grew up together, and he just had that kind of that slow drawl, all his life, just even keel, but I think the thing that just strikes me the most is that, I remember seeing him at the drugstore just in the beginning of September, and we would sit down and talk, and just have a good time joking around, and then I guess he went on a hunting trip, he was, he was still doing well, and then all of a sudden, they discovered why he was having some pains. And then, in a very short time, he's gone. So, I guess I would close, and I would say, yeah, I would hope everyone would get that kind of send-off, because it was amazing, and it was, it was just a great tribute to a really nice guy. So, with that, my condolences to, again, the people in the fire service who, who's, who remember Wayne as a person that just kind of, I mean, he'll always be around the fire station, one way or the other, he'll be around the fire station with all the people that are there, because he worked with the majority of them that are there now. And to his family, his sons, his in-laws, his grandchildren, he was just a super guy. We have another person of the City Hall family that just recently passed away, and that is Tessie Mazzina. I think a lot of you have been around Los Banos a long time, would know Tessie. Tessie was a 40-year employee, and she was always at that front counter. And I remember, since I was a little kid, going in to visit Tessie. Tessie was, was she a city clerk? Yeah, she was our city clerk. And she worked for the city for 40 years, and then volunteered time before, during, after, and was just a fixture in our community. She's just a wonderful, wonderful lady. She lived at New Bethany the remaining years of her life, she lived right down the street all her life, because she, I think she was just, she grew up in the house right next to, almost next to the police station, and then remained in the home after her parents died. So, Tessie is, is, was, and always will be a wonderful person, and the fond memories I have of her in City Hall, and I'm going back to when I was like five years old. So, it's hard to see transition, and that transition sometimes is death. And a continuance from one generation to the next, and in Wayne's case, I can remember all the people just sitting at the counter at the drugstore all those years, and they're not there anymore. And now, the person that I grew up with here in City Hall, Tessie. So, with that, it's...
I think I want to mention the flags.
Yeah. Our city manager, I wanted to leave that for you, but, okay, all right. The city manager has ordered the flags flown at half-mast this weekend in her honor of a wonderful, wonderful employee. So, thank you for that, Don. And before I close, I would like to place the, an item on the next agenda. Over the months, the city manager and I, and I'm sure city council members get requests for funds for different events in Los Banos, and I'd just kind of like to see how the council feels about this, and maybe if, and I'm not advocating either way, I just want to put this on the table, because I think we should let the public know where we stand as a council. And that is to see if there is sufficient interest to expend staff time on developing a policy for grants for public purpose events and projects. So I'm going to place that on the next agenda, I can't discuss it tonight, and then see if council wants to expend staff time at the, at the next meeting or not. And again, this is not advocating either way, it's just something I think we need to place on the agenda and find out where we are as a council. So with that, let's see, is there anything else here? Did I forget anything else? No closed session? Okay, so with that, I would like to adjourn the meeting at 8:05. Okay, so with that, I would like to adjourn the meeting at 8:05.
I'll give you some of these with the rubber bands.
Oh, good.
So you don't get them all over.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll get them to you tomorrow, Friday.